Start recording on this.
No, no.
Okay. This is Auburn County Budget Meeting for Wednesday, June tenth, twenty twenty-five, five P M. Eleven, that's third. Yeah, June eleventh at five P M. Big Greg Newton's calling the meeting to order. A roll call, Steve Barlow. They have some Greg Newtons here, Robbie Mountain.
Here.
Darwin Clark.
Here.
Randall Boswell.
Here.
Patrick McPurdy, yes, here. I made a call. Number three, approve the minutes of the last meeting held June ninth, twenty twenty-five.
We need to change it. Forward our motion, Patrick, you, you made the motion to accept it, it's got Patrick on both of them. Motion, Patrick said, but Patrick needs to be up here, says he made the motion minutes. And sales fact.
Yeah, down here at the bottom.
Yeah.
So Patrick made the motion?
No, it's a Patrick's second, you made the, I'm gonna make the motion, it's got Patrick doing both of them.
Greg made the motion.
Yeah, the Greg saw that, Greg made the motion.
Okay. Were that changed on the minutes for the last meeting, is anybody gonna make a motion?
I'll make that one.
Darwin made the motion.
Darwin.
Second.
Patrick said.
Yeah, Darwin did. All right. Number four, open jail, senior food. Jail and senior center for food and non-bids. Non, non-food bids, looks like we've got only, uh. Only got one bid on that. Open that up and dig it in.
Usually what do all we get for the jail unit?
Yeah, most of the time.
The institution?
Yes, they don't really use food.
Oh, they're called E O T.
So.
It's sold back.
Okay, on that, that direction, who made the motion?
Randall made the motion to change, uh, to correct the minutes. Me making the motion and. Improvement, Greg.
Yeah, Patrick.
Patrick said.
We have notes. On the next page.
Randall, they normally do an average, it's usually an estimated average. So there will be a, uh, be on each item.
Okay.
What we normally do is have the jail administrator.
Just wanna look at, make a motion to send it to the jail.
Yeah, and here it is, they've got it all. Broke out separate onions, cabbage, oranges, fresh cabbage, fresh potatoes, carrots, lettuce. And then we've got the bread and the milk and everything. If they wanna, I made a motion to send it to the jail, let them look on it, if it's.
That's the table, that's what you do with them.
Yeah, and bring it back to the next meeting for approval.
Darwin, so Randall made a motion to, uh, forward this to the. Jail administrator for review on the bid items and. And then Darwin made a second one. Patrick McPurdy.
Yes.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Darwin Clark.
Yes.
Robbie Mountain.
Yes.
Greg Newtons, yes, all, all the papers. Okay, number five, open the highway bids.
Uh, wheels, I've got, uh, laid out here an order for about, so. First we'll start with retired two, we only got one, uh, bid for that and I'll pass it down and let you stamp it for that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, with this committee, instead of going through every one of these, you just, uh, do the same motion for us, so we take it back and. Review it tomorrow and then get back to the, uh, that's the table.
So we ain't gonna go and sign them all around?
Yeah, we ain't gonna sign all of them, but we won't. Unless, unless somebody. Yes, that's right, I was gonna say, anybody, when we get them open, anybody wanna take a picture, they'd be welcome too.
Is that a motion, go ahead.
No, I, I didn't, I was asking if they were.
This, this is from Highway Tire here, I mean.
And they were getting better.
They don't have it. And that's one bid.
We'll just open them and then make the motion after we're done.
Make sure it's all here.
Yeah.
Do we need to sign all these, or are we just tossing?
The one that has the dollar on it.
They all.
Well, they all do.
And all of them.
Who's this from?
Highway Tire.
Hot, yeah, Highway Tire.
Highway Tire.
There's all of them.
Damn one.
Well, we go back and.
Just they go that in board? Just can't send it with it, cause I have it mixed up.
You send the envelope with the dollar, I'm not very good.
All right, while we're, they're going around signing, we have only one bid for striping, it's on, it looks like, I went through all these, I don't see anything else, so. We'll pass it down to Patrick, my hand now, for striping, and it's volunteer striping is the only bid.
What was that, that first one in brown, but?
Highway Tire, what was the price? It had very, very prices, and you have.
Yeah.
Yeah, each item, each tire's priced differently.
Then what?
Each tire's priced differently, but you're welcome to look at it and then get the file, if you want to.
Those are different size tires?
Yeah, it's for different sizes.
No, uh, Greg got signed.
Get signed off? All right. Volunteer Highway Supply Company, striping.
Yeah, they're the only, only bidder we got, and they're out of Knoxville, they have a satellite office in Crossville.
We have a total bid on that.
There'll be a five mile.
Different, different, zero fifteen, fifteen to thirty, thirty plus miles.
Volunteer Highway Supply.
All right, the next, uh, will be our asphalt in place and pickup. So, um, we have, uh, looks like we've got one, two. Two pickups and three pickups and then in place, thank, we'll open them and see and make sure, but anyway. Uh, this one here is from, uh, Copland D R P, that's for asphalt. Uh, this is Vulcan for asphalt pickup there.
Just pickup.
Yes, yeah, that's where it is.
Not okay.
Yeah. And then, uh, we have one from, uh. Looks like from, uh, for, uh, pavement restoration, for, uh, Cold Mix asphalt pickup for Cold Mix. Asphalt restoration, and the other one will be with Rogers Group. Yeah, it's like it's pickup and in place for it.
What was the fifth one, I mean, the se- third one?
Third one is, uh, uh. Rest, pavement restoration out of Galveston, and it's for Cold Mix pick, asphalt pickup for Cold Mix. And then the last one is Rogers Group in place and pickup.
Okay, I'll read these off.
Go ahead.
No, this is D R P, this is just in, this is just pickup, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, binder. Binder A one twenty, this is, everything will be by the ton. Binder B, B M, and C, one twenty. Topping E C W, one twenty-four. Topping E F, ten percent, one thirty. Topping D Mix, one fifty. Three oh seven C, one twenty. Three oh seven C M, one twenty-four. And, uh. Okay, that's another page.
Yeah, go ahead, Tommy, tell him.
Uh, binder A, eighty-eight dollars a ton, this will all be tons too. And binder B, B M C, eighty-eight dollars. Topping E C M, uh, E C W, ninety dollars. The B and, B and C was eighty-eight.
Next pickup, yeah.
Yeah, the topping E F, ten percent, is one ten. Topping D Mix is one fifty, no bid on Cold Mix. Three oh seven C, eighty-eight, eighty-eight.
Pickup there.
Three oh seven C M is ninety.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's pickup, the first one, the first one's in place.
Yeah.
That was a pickup, yeah.
All right, this is from Vulcan Materials, um, so pickup. Binder A, ninety dollars. Binder B, B M, C, ninety dollars. Topping E C W, ninety-two dollars. Topping E F, ten percent, hundred dollars. Topping D Mix, hundred dollars. Cold Mix, a hundred and three dollars. Three oh seven dash C, ninety dollars. Three oh seven dash C M, ninety-two dollars.
There'll be another, probably, there might be another sheet behind that, Patrick.
Say it.
Always, I saw they just did the, uh, pickup, Ron, you want that for, for that? Vulcan's pickup.
Pickup.
Mm-hmm. And D R P, so pickup.
Yeah.
And. In the midplace. Just two more, um, we got Rogers Group, uh, and then we've got, uh, pavement restoration, uh, that's it.
What did you say, Darwin, sir?
Uh, that's, uh, you got Rogers Group there, Rogers Group there, and then Patrick's got pavement restoration. Maybe we wanna flip Vulcan and bring, take a picture of it.
Down, I think, so that's all that right here.
Okay, this is Rogers Group. It says bid for asphalt pickup and in place. First one will be, first one will be pickup. Everything will be by the ton. Binder sixty-two dollars. Or binder A. Binder B, B M and C, sixty dollars. Topping E C W, sixty-eight dollars. Topping E F, ten percent, eighty dollars. Topping D Mix, ninety-four dollars. No bid on Cold Mix. Three oh seven C, sixty dollars. Three oh seven C M, sixty dollars, that was pickup. And this will be in place. Okay, binder A, one hundred dollars, it's all be by the ton too. Binder B, B M and C, a hundred and two dollars. Topping E C W, one oh eight. Topping E F, ten percent, one thirty-five. Topping D Mix, one forty-five. C O, three oh seven C, one oh two. Three oh seven C M, one oh eight.
Those were pickup jobs, right?
Uh, that last one was in place, and the first one was pickup.
Okay, thank you.
This is P R I Pavement. Pavement Restoration Corporation, okay. Uh, pickup. Binder A, no bid, binder B, B M, C, no bid, topping E C W, no bid. Topping E F, ten percent, no bid, topping D Mix, no bid. Cold Mix, uh, is a hundred and nineteen dollars. Three oh seven dash C, no bid, three oh seven dash C M, no bid. Cold Mix, a hundred and thirty-five dollars, best delivery.
R S two, which is our N A and three, that's the oil we used to shoot, or, typically, then what we make our, uh, Cold Mix, our pavement mix out of. First one will be the Marathon, and then the other, Aragon, two, nine, around there. Aragon, we got Aragon.
It, it's not signed yet.
No.
Um, that's maybe, that's not an issue there. Just go ahead and do it, yeah, that's what it is, so, long as it failed and it was.
Okay. A E dash P, uh, here's your gallons, two sixty-five, two dollars, two dollars sixty-five, everyone here?
Per gallon.
Good. A E dash P, two dol- two ninety-five. S S dash one, three dollars. S S dash one, delivered, two twenty-eight. Uh, R S dash two, a dollar eighty, R S dash two, delivered, a dollar ninety-eight. Eighty-three, two dollars and eleven cents. Eighty-three, delivered, two dollars and thirty-nine cents. R M dash ninety, under a viral patch. We got R M dash nine, four point eight. Aspen, uh, rejuvenator, no bid. Opti-Pave, no bid, P M M, no bid.
Pickup. Pickup delivered.
Yeah, these are all, will be per gallon price.
Okay, I've got Murafon, trouble. A E P, pickup, two sixty. A E P, delivered, two eighty. S S R one, pickup, two fifty. S S R one, delivered, two seventy. R S two, pickup, one seventy-eight. R S two, delivered, is one ninety-eight. Eighty-three, no bid. Hey, on pickup, hard delivery. And, uh, they've got no bid on everything else, so we're just going over them.
We got Hudson Materials Company. Price today on A E P, uh, with a prime pickup, three dollars a gallon. A E P, prime, delivered. Three sixteen a gallon. T A, pickup, S S one, two dollars and eighty-four cents. S S one, delivered, three dollars a gallon. R S two, steel, pickup, two seventy-nine a gallon. R S two, uh, seal, delivered. Two ninety-five a gallon. A E, mixed grade pickup, three dollars and fifteen cents. A three, mixed grade delivered, delivered, it's, uh, three dollars and thirty-one cents. For gallon. No bid on Aspen. On the Cold Mix, so, I'm at, well, yeah, here's the viral, viral patch Cold Mix, I'm sorry, did I mention that one? That was three dollars and eighty-five cents a gallon. No bid on the Aspen, or the Opti-Pave, or the P P M, or the P M C T S, on the master cylinders and the rejuvenator, probably.
What was your R S two?
The R S two pickup was two dollars and seventy-nine cents a gallon.
All right, while we're finished, they're finished, I'm at, we have, uh, pipe, our pipe, our plastic and our metal pipe, uh, roll tile. Uh, we got one from, uh, Wind Supply of Cookville, we got another one from Contact Engineering Solutions in Cookville. And then PUG Septic Tanks, uh, in, open, in Livingston, so. When you're all ready, I'll, I'll, I'll lay one down. You ready?
Yeah.
Or, or PUG. Here's Wind Supply, and then here will be Contact. Thank you. They'll be, uh. On these pipe here, uh, there'll be several different ones listed, so, uh, you know, if you wanna read them.
To read these off? There'll be several of them.
There'll be several, I, you know, so. We'll, we'll compare them.
Okay. The twelve foot, sixteen gauge pipe, sixteen oh four foot, this will all be a foot. Fifteen inch, sixteen gauge pipe. Twenty oh seven.
And that's the metal, right? Is that metal?
Oh.
Is that plastic? They'll say poly on it, if it's plastic.
No, they don't say poly.
Okay.
It's, it's this metal.
Okay.
And then the, uh, eighteen foot, sixteen gauge, twenty-five, twenty-five. The twenty-four inch, fourteen gauge, forty-four, eighty-five. Twenty-four, sixteen gauge, thirty-four, forty-four. Thirty inch, twelve gauge, no bid. Thirty inch, fourteen gauge, fifty-six, twelve. Thirty inch, sixteen gauge, forty-three, fifteen. Thirty-six inch, twelve gauge, seventy-nine, seventy. Thirty-six inch, fourteen gauge, sixty-seven, twenty-eight. Thirty-six inch, sixteen gauge, fifty-one, sixty-nine. Forty-two inch, twelve gauge, a hundred and six, sixty-six. Forty-two inch, fourteen gauge, seventy-eight, sixty. Forty-two, sixteen gauge, sixty-two, sixty-eight. And that was, this, this steel metal, the forty-eight inch, twelve gauge, a hundred and twenty-one, sixty-one. Forty-eight inch, fourteen gauge, eighty-nine, eighty-two. Forty-eight, sixteen gauge, seventy-one, twenty-five. Sixty inch, twelve gauge, a hundred and fifty-one, fifty-one. Sixteen inch, fourteen gauge, one twenty-six, eighty. Seventy-two inch, twelve gauge, two hundred and eight, seventy. Seventy-two inch, fourteen gauge, one fifty-two, ninety. That was the metal, the next is, the next one will be plastic. The, uh, twelve inch, poly, six sixty-five, a foot, this will all be a foot too. Fifteen inch, nine dollars. Eighteen inch, ten ninety. Twenty-four inch, nineteen eighty. Thirty inch, thirty sixty. Thirty-six inch, forty-one, ten. Forty-two inch, fifty-four, eighty. These are also poly, about a foot, forty-eight inch, sixty-seven, thirty. And sixty inch, a hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-five. That's cold, yeah.
Go ahead, you got Wind Supply.
Wind Supply, uh, and they only bid, they're on the plastic. Twelve inch, seven oh seven. Fifteen inch, nine fifty-three. Eighteen inch, thirteen, fifteen. Twenty-four inch, twenty-one, seventy-four. Thirty inch, thirty-one, sixty. Thirty-six inch, thirty-nine, thirty-six. Forty-two inch, fifty-eight, twelve. Forty-eight inch, seventy-one, thirty-five. Sixty inch, one twenty-one, seventy-nine.
Is Contact doing both, or is it just metal?
They've got both. It's Contact Engineering Solutions. Uh, the metal pipe, uh, twelve inch, twelve gauge pipe, uh, no quote on the linear, for linear footage on that one. Twelve inch, fourteen gauge, eighteen dollars a foot. Twelve inch, sixteen gauge pipe, fifteen dollars. Per linear foot. Uh, no quote on the fifteen. Inch on the twelve gauge, on the fifteen inch, fourteen gauge pipe. It's, uh, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per linear foot. Fifteen, I mean, fifteen inch, uh, fifteen inch, sixteen gauge. It's eighteen dollars in here. And the eighteen inch, when the twelve gauge pipe on me, it's thirty-three dollars. On the eighteen inch, fourteen gauge pipe, twenty-seven dollars, there we go. Eighteen inch, sixteen gauge, twenty-two, fifty-nine. On page two, uh, twenty-four inch, twelve gauge pipe, it's forty-nine, fifty, per linear foot. Twenty-four inch, fourteen gauge, it's thirty-six dollars. Twenty-four inch, sixteen gauge, twenty-eight, fifty. Thirty inch, twelve gauge, sixty-one, fifty. Thirty inch twelve gauge, sixty-one, fifty. Thirty inch fourteen gauge, forty-five dollars. Thirty inch sixteen gauge, thirty-six dollars. Thirty-six inch twelve gauge pipe, seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. Thirty-six inch fourteen gauge pipe, it's fifty-four dollars. Thirty-six on the six, thirty-six inch for a sixteen gauge is forty-three, fifty. Forty-two inch for twelve gauge pipe is eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. Forty-two inch on a fourteen gauge is sixty-three dollars. Forty-two inch on a sixteen gauge pipe is fifty-one dollars. That's all the metal. Still got metal on this side, side. A forty-eight inch twelve gauge pipe is ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents per linear foot. Forty-eight inch fourteen gauge pipe is seventy-two dollars. Forty-eight inch sixteen gauge is fifty-seven dollars. Sixty inch twelve gauge is a hundred and thirty-one dollars and ten cents. Sixty inch fourteen gauge is ninety-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Sixty inch sixteen gauge is seventy-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. And then the, they went to, uh, sixty-six inch, sixty-six inch fourteen gauge is a hundred and five dollars and forty-five cents in here. And a sixty-six inch, yeah, sixty-six inch sixteen gauge pipe is eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. Seventy-two inch pipe, uh, twelve gauge is a hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Seventy-two on the fourteen gauge is a hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-two cents. Seventy-two inch on sixteen gauge, no quote. Eighty-four inch, twelve gauge pipe, a hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents. Eighty-four inch fourteen gauge is a hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. And no quote for the eighty-four inch sixteen. Now, on the next page is the plastic pipe. Twelve inch polyethylene, ten dollars and thirty-five cents per linear foot. Fifteen inch polyethylene is thirteen dollars. Eighteen inch polyethylene is seventeen, fifty. Twenty-four inch polyethylene, twenty dollars and fifty cents. Thirteen inch poly, it's forty-nine, uh, forty-one dollars and forty-two cents. Thirty-six inch poly, it's fifty-six dollars and forty-two cents. And then there's no quote on the forty-two inch. And, so I've got one more page. Forty-eight inch poly, uh, so you just need to call for the quote on that one. Sixty inch, same thing, off the quotes. And then seventy-two, not applicable, eighty-four, not applicable. Has, has he on that phone?
Yeah, okay. All right, next we have is the aggregate, uh, crush stone. We've got a vendor from Gaddy Shamrock in Kentucky and Albany. And then we have one for Panther Enterprise down in Buffalo Valley. And we have one for Rockford.
We're about done, Greg, we got one more. This is Robbie, uh, crush stone. Number seven, this is the max size number seven. Chips, nine oh three, fourteen half-inch chip, seventeen dollars a ton. Three-eighths chip, eighteen dollars a ton. The three-quarter chip, sixteen dollars a ton. The nine oh three point oh five grade D is eleven dollars a ton. A one rip rap, six to twelve. Uh, is fifteen dollars a ton. The A three, three inch by six, fifteen dollars a ton for the A one six to twelve moderate. Shot rock, ten dollars. Crusher run, eleven dollars. No dirty crusher run. And block screenings, sixteen fifty. Look at these. Okay, here, this, here, they, they quoted the, uh, nine oh three, one twenty-two, three-inch chip, at fourteen dollars a ton. That's all they quoted on that, on that sheet. They didn't, they didn't quote it on the other sheet, so. It's a number eight, number eight.
What is the number eight?
Number eight.
The three eights, the number eights for Albany?
No, we, Rockford, nine oh three, uh,
It's, it's a number, it's, uh, it's the number nine quarter inch chip.
Quarter, oh.
No, three eighths, sorry, the three eighths you'd chip, fourteen dollars a ton. They didn't have it on this, they didn't have it on the one.
Got you.
You quoted that at Albany, yeah. Yeah, that is, the first one he ran was for Livingston, and then that last one, two, they all been.
Just the, just the one.
Okay, yeah, that was, I'll be, I'll be quarry on this, I bet. Nah, let's keep it, Roger, we saw.
I forgot about the fire bind, all, and it's all in one package.
Right.
I was separating, I realized it was.
Well, there was, there was one listed, Livingston, Aggregates, and Albany Andrews, so.
I looked over my back. Sorry about that.
No, you're good.
This is like, Gaddy Shamrock, um, give their own list here. Number fifty-seven stone, fifteen dollars a ton, this all per ton. Number sixty-eight stone, fifteen dollars. Number six-ten stone, eleven dollars. Number eight stone, seventeen dollars. Number two stone, twelve dollars. Number ten stone, nine dollars. Hot stone, zero, uh, twelve dollars. PGA stone, eleven dollars. Rip raps, rip rap stone, ten dollars. Number eleven stone, seventeen dollars. And A one M, six dollars.
And there should be one for Panther. You got Panther.
I got Panther Enterprises here. Panther Enterprises for the, uh, aggregate size seven. I'll bid on that, on half-inch chips. Uh, no bid on the number eights, no bid on the number nines. No bids on the sixty-sevens. Uh, on the fifty-seven, we got, uh, spec fourteen, three-quarter chips, uh, seventeen dollars a ton. The base stone, spec oh five on the grade D is, uh, twelve dollars and fifty cents a ton. No bid on the, uh, A one rip rap, shot stone, or ballast stone, I'm sorry. Shot rocks, twelve dollars a ton. Crusher runs, twelve dollars a ton. No bid on the dirty crusher run, and no bid on the block screen.
We've got one more bid, though, but this is for, uh, this is for time of theaster, this is, it's for roadway maintenance, which would be for mowing and spraying, uh, the roadway. We've only got one bid, and, uh, read the name of that Patrick, I wasn't meaning, of that company.
Morgan, Austin Scott Hartman?
Yeah, that's who's in it. Company, is your company name on there? Okay.
Oh, here, this covered H LLC?
Covered H.
Uh, all right. Yeah, covered H LLC, bush hog mowing, uh, this is service rate per mile. Bush hog mowing, sixty-five dollars. Boom hog ditch bank mowing, seventy-five dollars. And litter cleanup, two hundred dollars.
That's mine.
That's mine. That is. One white mowing.
Well, that, that's all of our bids, and I thank everybody that did, had participated in. We appreciate you doing that, and y'all, and have a good rest, everybody. So, thanks for coming in, and just saying, if anybody wants any, uh, pictures or effects, look over each other's picture on the place, we'll, we'll do that for the next few minutes, and then, you know, maybe if you're in them, let them go there and look at their picture of them, what they want to, to put it back in the, uh, put it back in their envelope. Here, I got one more. Uh, Sharon, I, like I said, I was actually entertained that you make a motion for us to take it back to the highway department and score them and compare them, and then come back with recommendations, and then go and push them.
Do you want to make that as a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that as a motion.
Darwin makes, makes a motion for us to, uh, send this to the highway department for further review and take the best, best bids on it. And Darwin heard, ran the set on highway bids.
Patrick and Kurt?
Yes.
Round by.
Yes, I'm by.
Yeah.
Probably now.
Yes.
Greg, no.
Got one more, there's Darwin.
We've got none, oh. Oh, right, one did, yeah.
Then they bid that before.
I forgot about that, sorry.
That's, that's, first year of that.
Yeah, yeah, we just, we were trying to see what it would cost out there, to see would be efficient, efficient, or efficient to do it that way or not, to get, you know, what we expect.
Uh, any further discussion on any of those? Number six, uh, approve any amendments? We don't have any amendments to approve, so. Number six, not applicable. Number seven, discuss any order new bids? Anybody? Nine, on hand? Number eight, next, next meetings are Monday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, to approve the schoolhouse and county amendments. Monday, June thirtieth, at four-thirty, at the old courthouse. That will be for, uh, the, uh, first, uh, no, that's not a courthouse, it's a budget meeting before this. Oh, that's for the budget meeting before the. Number nine, you got number nine. Everybody want to make a motion adjourned? Samuel makes a motion. Patrick makes a second, all in favor. Uh, uh, motion. Passes, uh, make any amendments?